I can also squeeze you in first thing in the morning if it's a matter of that.
No, I was.
Okay.
I take the baby to daycare in the morning. Your kids got class, so I'm stuck. Um, all right. I will now call this meeting to order and see if there is a quorum present. Uh, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace.
President.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey.
President.
Councilmember Emily Hill.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Present.
Councilmember Wallace.
Here.
Councilmember Deja Hill.
Here.
Councilmember Krupa. Jean, I thought he was on here.
He was, I think he just jumped off.
Okay.
Okay, I say that we have a quorum. Uh, now we will move to the pledge of allegiance. Chief, if you can lead us in that since, uh, you know, we've got you here.
Absolutely. Uh, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
As the United States of America.
And one nation under God, indivisible.
All right, now moving on to proclamations. Uh, we have two proclamations. Uh, one declaring Monday, January eighteenth, eighteen twenty twenty-one as Martin Luther King Junior Day and declaring the month of February as Black History Month. So, uh, the first one to read is follows. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Junior devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union. And whereas Dr. King's teachings can continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our own communities. And whereas in nineteen ninety-four, Congress designated the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday as a national day of a volunteer service. In charge of America Corps with leading this effort. And whereas since nineteen ninety-four, millions of Americans have been inspired by the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior to serve their neighbors and communities on the King Holiday. And whereas serving on MLK Day is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King, meet local and national needs, bring our citizens together, and strengthen our communities and nations. And whereas MLK Day offers an opportunity for Americans to give back to their communities on the holiday and make an ongoing commitment to service throughout the year. And whereas virtual and COVID-nineteen appropriate MLK Day service projects are being organized by a wide range of nonprofit and community organizations, educational institutions, public agencies, private businesses, and other organizations across the nation to meet important community needs. And whereas each of us can and must contribute to making our communities better with increased opportunity for all of our citizens. And whereas citizens of Maynor have the opportunity to participate in virtual and state service events throughout our city on Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, as well as create and implement community service projects where they identify the need. Now therefore, I, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor of the City of Mary, Texas, and on behalf of the Mayor City Council, do hereby proclaim Monday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, as Martin Luther King Junior Day. And City of Maynor, we call upon citizens to pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior through participation in community service projects on Martin Luther King Junior Day and throughout the year. In witness whereof, I have here on to set my hand and cause to still the City of Maynor to be affixed this twentieth day of January twenty twenty-one. Signed, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor, City of Maynor. And the second proclamation reads as follows. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas in nineteen fifteen, Dr. Carter Godwin Woodson, noted black scholar and son of a former slaves, founded Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas Dr. Woodson initiated Black History Week in February twelfth, nineteen twenty-six, and for many years, the second week of February chose to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln, were celebrated by African-Americans in the United States. And whereas in nineteen seventy-six, as part of the national, as part of the nation's bicentennial Black History Week, was expanded and became established as Black History Month, and is now celebrated all over North America. And whereas after the Civil War, many black Americans sought a better life, free from oppression in a search of new economic opportunities, and the liberty to create their own lives. And whereas the observance of the Black History Month called our nation's attention to the continued need to battle racism and to build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. Now therefore, I, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor of the City of Maynor, Texas, and on behalf of the Mayor City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of February twenty twenty-one as Black History Month. And the City of Maynor urge all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. In witness whereof, I have here on to set my hand and cause to still the City of Maynor to be affixed this twentieth day of January twenty twenty-one. Signed, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor, City of Maynor. All right. So we have two great proclamations for this month. Uh, moving on next into the agenda, we have no public comments, so moving on to reports. Reports about items of community interest on which no action will be taken. The first one is the Public Safety Committee, Chief.
Good evening, Council Mayor. So, uh, we have only been able to have one meeting so far. Our December meeting was not able to take place because I, uh, um, got COVID, so I was out of the office for a little bit. Uh, but, um, we are scheduled for our next Public Safety Committee meeting next week, and, um, that's, I think, all that I have to update on that one. Any questions on it?
No, I saw the calendar invite come in, so looking forward to that. Any comments from, uh, Council? All right. Moving on to the Emergency Management Committee, back to you, Chief.
This one is, uh, you know, gonna be a lot of fun. Uh, we're still working really hard on this. We should probably, uh, schedule a meeting, uh, of the committee for this one. We are working now with, um, uh, it's called TAPS. It's Texas All Hazards Planning System. Um, and we are working closely with, uh, Department of Public Safety, um, and TDM, Texas Department of Emergency Management. So our emergency management plan will eventually start to take a little more shape. Uh, and just to be clear, so anybody that's listening, we do have an emergency management plan. We are just currently working on formulating our, uh, city-specific emergency management plan. Uh, so with, uh, the help of TAPS and TDM and DPS, uh, we will all come together. We're also, uh, just, uh, have been talking with, uh, Travis County Emergency Management, and we are about to start, uh, back with them on, uh, updating our upcoming hazardous mitigation action plan, which ties into our, uh, emergency management plan. So, uh, a lot of stuff happening, but there are so many different organizations that we're, uh, teamed up with, uh, that getting them all, uh, together and on the same path is sometimes difficult. Any questions on that one?
Uh, I was gonna say, I was saying that definitely would love to be able to see what changes have transpired or what conversations have gone on, since it has been a while since we sat down. Uh, and then I believe we have a vacancy. We need to fill, uh, that, that, that was, uh, a former council member, Danny Scarborough. Um, so I think we need to select that replacement, so we probably need to create that as an agenda item.
Yeah.
That's the one I'm appointing. Um, and then for, uh, Councilwoman Wallace and Councilwoman Weir and Councilman Krupa, uh, just to give you an example of this, this big old document we're talking about here. You see this red binder down there? That's, that's, that's the basic plan. This, this big old huge red binder down there. And then the white binder on top of that is the addendum. So, um, so when he's talking about, there's a lot that needs to go through, there is a lot that needs to go through. So just wanted to give you an example of that. So, uh, open the floor, uh, to, to any of the council members. Any, any comments, remarks, questions? All right, there being none. Moving on to the Economic Development Committee. Uh, that is gonna be me. Uh, ended up having a follow-up with the Economic Development Committee members. I wanna say it was yesterday or two days ago. I can't, I can't recall. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Harvey was on. Uh, maybe he might be able to recall. All my days are shifting together. And we basically talked to them regarding the workshop we just had the past Saturday and, and, and really giving them, uh, awareness of the sales tax situation, land, uh, some of the developments that are going on. And, and, um, I also formally did the introduction and the handover of the Economic Development Committee to Mayor Pro Tim Harvey. So he'll be taking the lead on that. He'll be analyzing and reviewing the current members and if there needs to be any additional tweaks and adjustments, uh, on that committee. Uh, and then, so he'll be leading the steering committee. So anything you wanna add to that, uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
All right, sure. Um, it was, um, it wasn't the twentieth. Uh, let's see, we met on... I guess, um, was it two days ago? It was a Tuesday, Tuesday evening, uh, we met. And, um... Um, one of the things we talked about was, um, bringing some expert testimony to the committee. And so we talked about a few cities within a twenty-five, thirty-mile radius that were doing well, and some areas that was important to us. And, um, and so we had one of our committee members, um, Ms. Leslie Tran Lee, that was wanting to reach out and try to secure, uh, some, uh, experts to come in and talk with us. We also talked about the, um, uh, comprehensive plan and, um, you know, being ready for that to come for, come before council for a vote. And so, um, hopefully we can get that to council pretty soon, uh, through the contract pieces. And then, um, we took some questions, and, um, the team wanted to know what was, uh, what was coming to Maynor, what was already approved and underway. And so, uh, Scott so graciously got that list to me, and so I'll be sending that out to the team, um, this evening so that they can, uh, kinda be aware of some of those, uh, just, just some bullet points of what's, uh, go- going on right now in Maynor. So that was pretty it, pretty much it. We're gonna set up another meeting time and try to engage some more members to attend and, and go from there.
Any, uh, questions, comments, or remarks, uh, regarding the Economic Development Committee or anything for Mayor Pro Tim Harvey on this?
No, Mayor, it's, uh, it's very concise. I finally got back in. This is Krupa, and, uh, the Mayor Pro Tim gave a very concise, uh, dialogue on what was going on, and I'm very happy to be better informed on it.
Well, good. Yeah, I'm, I'm glad that, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Harvey has stepped up to, to take the lead on this economic aspect. Uh, I, I, I think, you know, we all have the consensus and understanding that, you know, uh, he is probably, he, he definitely is the, the, the foremost knowledgeable person on, on the, on the council in this area. So it only, only makes sense for him to take the charge and to take the lead on this effort. So look forward to, uh, what he's able, what headway he's able to make, uh, in this area for us and for the team. Uh, moving on to tower repainting, Lydia.
Mayor, Mayor, sorry to interrupt. You skipped over the C, Education Committee.
Oh, I did. Hey, good job.
Yeah, actually, I was gonna jump in on that.
Hey, I got it.
Yeah. We did tell you to hurry, right? No, but briefly, um, we haven't had a meeting yet, uh, because of the elections with the school board. Um, so it, we're, I was trying to get a, a good date for, um, some of us to be able to attend, so I'm currently working on that right now, um, for this month. So next go around, we'll have something for you.
No, I appreciate it. Uh, any comments, questions, or remarks, uh, for, for Councilman, Councilwoman Hill on the Education Committee?
Councilmember Hill, um, when you go, if you have a chance to talk to anybody from the Maynor ISD, can you please ask them why they let the children out on Columbus Day for somebody that didn't do anything except discover a land that was, you know, hundreds of miles away from the United States? And they make them go to school on Veterans Day? It's very upsetting when, you know, a school board does something like that. And I think the Education Committee could possibly, you know, reduce that to them and remedy that fact that, um, veterans are a little bit more important than Columbus when he didn't do what he's supposed to have done, okay? And if, uh, this creates any debate, I'm sorry, but, uh, that's my opinion, and I think that the children should know about veterans better than, and more than the, um, person that supposedly owned America, which wasn't him. It was Vespucci. America just Vespucci. And, um, I'd like to see if they would listen to you on that fact.
Okay, Jean, can you do me a favor? Just send me the email so I don't forget it, and I could put that on the list of the items to discuss.
I will be more than happy to give you that information, and, um, I appreciate you, uh, taking it under advisement. Thank you.
Appreciate you, thank you.
So I gotta add a point of clarity on that one. Uh, I don't know historically if the previous years in, in, in Mayor Pro Tim Harvey can speak to that, but I do know this year, uh, they did implement Veterans Day being a holiday, especially with, uh, the school district being a Purple Heart District. Um, so I do know that much. Mayor Pro Tim Harvey, you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, um, uh, this particular year, we did have, I, I can't even, I can't even remember past, uh, this year. But I know this, this year, uh, the eleventh was off for Veterans Day. Um, and, uh, so, uh, so that's, that's definitely, uh, I think we definitely should still make sure that the team, that the district knows. Um, we, we appreciate the day off, and we like to make sure that, if best is possible, that that stays off. I think that, you know, to honor, uh, what, uh, Councilman Krupa is, is saying, I think we can still communicate the thanks of that being off this year, and then our hopes and desires for that to continue.
Thanks, Harvey. We'll definitely, um, bring that up and make sure it is permanent. It is important. I've got all these holidays mixed up since COVID.
Thank you, Dr. Harvey, appreciate it.
All right. Any additional questions, comments, or remarks for the Education, uh, for the Education Committee? All right, there being none. Moving now down to E, Tower, Tower Repainting, Lydia.
Uh, Mayor Council, um, this is just a recap to, um, I can't remember exactly what meeting Tom had actually given an update on this about, that it had, uh, in order for us to recode the existing, um, tower, it had exceeded what we had previously, um, been quoted. So in order to restore, uh, recode, rather, the existing tank, it's anywhere between three hundred thousand to five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which that would deplete all of the hot funds if that's what council chose to do. Um, and so...
I mean, sorry, Lydia, give me those numbers again, I'm sorry.
Three hundred thousand dollars to five hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
And Lydia, is that due to, uh, lead, uh, abatement because of the tower being painted as, uh, before lead paint was, uh, abolished?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And so one of the things that Frank and I had discussed earlier this week was, you know, what, um, what, really to give, to give you a more accurate figure and, um, you know, a better idea of what that project would really totally entail is really trying to get direction from council as to what was, what is your ultimate goal? What, what is it that you envision that being for?
You know, almost all the, the, the conversations and asks that I've received over, over the year or two has been more of, quote unquote, esprit de corps, the, the, uh, uh, a sense of this kind of pride or, um, seeing the tower to, to, to feel better, um, especially with everything that was going on with COVID. But I think also exhausting three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars out of the whole hot funds, a lot of the economic stuff we're talking about trying to do, especially from the workshop, uh, that anybody can go back and, and watch the recording, when we talked about the various things that hot funds can be used and some of the different ways we're, we're using them for now, um, it, it, it's not gonna be prudent to, to do the painting. Uh, I think we just further confine or restrict the city from finding ways to bring more revenue in to do what the people are, have been pleading for us to do. It, you know, and so it just wouldn't be, in, in my personal opinion, it would not be a, a, a good decision, a wise decision for us to do the painting and exhaust the hot funds.
Um, Mayor, I agree with you. I wanted to ask a question of Frank if he's online.
I'm, I'm on the line.
Okay, Frank, this is Krupa, um, you're Thorn. Is there any way to encapsulate or actually make and spray that tower with some kind of component or bonding material that will keep the lead paint there such that we cannot, we don't have to repaint it? Or is it a total, because of the EPA restrictions, a total scrape down of all the lead paint, primer, and repaint it?
So, so it, there's a potential, there, there are systems out there, um, that can be used to encapsulate the existing paint systems. Um, back in two thousand and seven, um, we engaged a, a, a testing firm to come out and do some very rudimentary lead, uh, and, and, and other metal concentration testing, as well as look at adhesion, the, the, how well the various coatings adhere to each other to the substrate. And, and we found that there were some issues, at least between layers. Um, and, and so those would need to be more thoroughly investigated to determine the extent and nature, to then determine what needs to be done as far as paint removal. Are we talking the top coat, the second coat, or, you know, taking it from sand blasters all the way down to near-white metal? Um, any of those removal processes will require shrouding of the tank to contain the lead so that it doesn't, you know, escape the side or contaminate the soils, um, which, which is a fairly expensive process, but it's a small tank, fortunately, so it's not that big of a shrouding project. Then, once you've got an adequate substrate, then you can go in with an encapsulation system and, and recode that. The, the other alternative would be just to strip it off and, and paint it the way you normally would. Um, and, and, um, so there are a couple of different options. The other thing that we don't know at this point is, you know, if there's any site contamination or not. Um, and so that would be something that we would wanna look at as part of the scope of the project, or ahead of time to better define, um, you know, what a, a project cost might be, do some initial sampling. Um, we did at that time in two thousand and seven have some structural assessment worked on, and at that time, the tank was in fairly good structural shape. Um, it's been a number of years now. Uh, I don't believe there's been any serious, um, structural degradation. The inter, the, the inspections that have been done in the interval, um, haven't called out any major, uh, structural corrosion issues or, or any other degradation. So, uh, I believe at this point, it's a structurally sound, uh, structured. My recommendation is that if the city intends to keep the tank, that, that there be a plan, um, within a reasonable number of years to, to address that coating system, because at some point, it, it, it will fail, and, and then the tank could ultimately fail as well, too. So it, it's, um, worth saving if it's important to the city, but, uh, granted, the cost is expensive. We can do some investigating now to better tighten that up. If the city wants to investigate that, we can do more adhesion testing, um, and come up with a painting scheme, and do some soils testing to determine the nature and extent of any existing contamination, and we can come back with a tighter number. So these numbers were conservative budget numbers based on a lot of unknowns, but, but reasonable estimates based on past projects.
Thank you, Frank. Um, those, that three hundred to hundred thousand dollars was based, is that based on totally stripping and the tower and ensuring that the ground has not been contaminated?
Yeah, the upper range includes that, that complete project and includes soft costs.
Okay, so, um...
Assuming that a lead contamination is not extreme, which in, the good thing about Maynor soils is metals don't migrate far in the, in the clay, so...
That, that's great, because, um, I would love to see that redone. And just because, one reason is the, the lights have been put up there for Christmas and been used for various celebrations. They do bring, uh, a li- uh, I guess, a flame to my heart or lights my heart up that it ma- makes it look good for the city. But I understand, because I was there when you were explaining the two thousand and seven, uh, project that, uh, was undertaken. But the, um, with what you've given us, you've given me, and, uh, I would think that it would be prudent to follow your direction and do some more testing and investigation on how we can encapsulate the tower and save it for future generations, as well as, you know, future tourism.
Now, and that does, that price also does not include fixing the grounds underneath, which is the fencing and the beautification of, you know, the, the garden grass area underneath. So you also have to add in extra for that as well. So the price that Net Frank had, uh, had provided us did not, um, did not include that beautification part as well.
So, uh, Frank, Lydia, can y'all do this, at least then maybe, is, uh, a couple, identify a couple courses of action, uh, as well as maybe a phased way to revitalizing the tower, um, to where we can put some other hot funds to it, but we don't also detract from what we need to spend. to where we can put some other hot funds to it, but we don't also detract from what we need to spend the hot funds on with, with the growth and trying to support the growth of the city. I, I get that the tower has the significance between the, the movie was eaten, give a grave and, and so forth. So yes, I, I definitely understand wanting to keep that in the lighting and stuff that goes with it. But if there's even, see, maybe what's the max years we can go before, as you said, the tank, you know, becomes more of a problem and, and no longer worthwhile trying to maintain it? And then just come up with a couple of different courses of actions, phases to it.
Is there, is there in, is there a, a price limit in council's mind about how?
I, I would, I would recommend thinking like any other type of government entity. We're trying to get the most for the littlest cost.
Um, okay.
So, so what we can do, Mayor, if I might, is come up with a, I think we can do it very inexpensively in terms of getting the assessment done. If we can engage a, a, a coating system representative and then design a, a package around what they would do. Sometimes they can do that at, at little or no cost. The soils testing, that, that's something that, you know, would need to be a, a, a cost that the city would, would take on. If, if you all are anticipating it's going to be a number of years out, the, the soils tester we might want to wait on because the, that condition may change over time. So I, I don't know if this is something that you'd be looking at in a three-year or five or a ten-year window. If it's the lower end of that, then I think we could do some soils testing and that would be useful information for scoping out a project. If it's more than that, then that information would be outdated at the time a project would go out and it would be reasonable to go back out and test the soils again to profile any potential contamination.
Got it. Let's just try to lump it in with the comprehensive plans since it's supposed to have a downtown revitalization focus on it as well. And, and maybe there might be some ways to, to, to do some cross work to, to mitigate just one overall expense for the tower. It might be able to tie some different types of works, efforts, grants, opportunities, or whatever into it. So. Like I said, don't want to restrict you on, on, on ability to think outside the box. Y'all obviously are experts on this one. So I appreciate the feedback on at least what the cost is right now. And, and basic guidance is, is hey, are there other ways to do it? And to be able to do it for what, you know, till it's no longer feasible because the tower would just be too old. All right, moving on to Civ Start. Debbie?
All right. Good evening, Council and Mayor. Civ Start is a nonprofit accelerator for government technology startups. And we've been, the mayor got it, got involved with the National League of Cities and we've been meeting with them for quite some time. And what they do is they discuss different issues and concerns that a, a city has and try to find startups to kind of work with the cities. So Tom and I had met at one point in time towards the end of last year and there was a company called Quali. And it's a company that creates a software system to engage with, to monitor and support individual business owners. And that's a really important thing at, at this time. So we basically meet bi-weekly with Civ Start and then we do quarterly meetings with Civ Start and the National League of Cities. So there was a presentation done last week with Quali and Civ Start. And they had sent the pilot project scope to us. And so after we had seen the presentation, we had asked them to draft a three-month pilot project at no cost and no long-term commitment to the city of Maynor. And we wanted to include the three following parts that we felt were really important. One was a Maynor Small Business Portal, Maynor Business Support Directory, and a Home-Based Business Navigator. So they're gonna, they have gone back and what they're going to be doing is they, they're gonna be answering some questions, are gonna be working on that, but what are our most important business objectives? They're gonna be drafting a scope of work. And then what do we want to accomplish in promoting our businesses? We had our meeting, our quarterly meeting yesterday with the National League of Cities and Civ Start. And it was very interesting because we had, in this meeting, we had Barton County, Kansas, the Borough of Carlisle, Pennsylvania, City of Maynor, City of Alexandria, Virginia, City of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, City of Rochester, New York, and the City of Wichita, Kansas. And once we had, we were walking through the meeting and everything, it was really interesting. Rochester, New York, Wichita, Kansas are also looking at Quali to do some work for them as well. And so we're gonna kind of try to keep in touch and with each other at the startup process and how we're moving along. And of course, once we get the pilot project back and given to the mayor and council, then we can see where you would want us to move forward in the future with this project.
Appreciate it, Debbie, and taking lead for this, for, for the city. You know, this, this is, the Civ Start is definitely an example in Peace Challenge, which we'll, I'll be talking about next. It is a great example of, you know, us having started to reach out to different entities and different organizations and letting them know what we need and, and where we're unable, for whatever reasons, to be able to hire certain people or have certain resources because we're still growing. And, and entities that we're relying on and entities that are relying on us, we're still learning best practices. And, you know, they're providing these, these services and support systems and insights to how other cities are doing outside of just the Austin metropolitan area. So we can really learn how to do things currently at no cost and be able to pilot them and see, as we've said to Civ Start multiple different times, is this is all new for the city. So please let us, you know, find entities and organizations that are willing to do pilot programs so we can show and demonstrate why we need to start setting money aside of a budget to do travel to other cities. Why we need to be more engaged with the Greater Austin Chamber of Commerce and others and do the traveling to be able to learn other best practices and not just the ones within the ten, fifteen mile radius that we may have been becoming accustomed to just analyzing and reviewing and comparing. So this is a great opportunity. I think Debbie, you have three other, like, uh, uh, three other softwares or programs to take a look at. They, they were recommending about four overall. So, so looking for, looking forward to that. Any questions from the team regarding Civ Start and, and how this is, is to help impact our local businesses, small businesses, continue to succeed as we plan and know that the bigger businesses that have the bigger funding are gonna come here and easily knock them out of the competition? All right, well, no questions. Debbie, one thing I would love for you to be able to add in or include Councilwoman Weir on the Civ Start effort. You know, I know she has an ear and a connection to the community that, that many of the rest of us don't. And I know there has been and we've all experienced it over the last couple of years, just that concern of kind of the split divide between the city of the new stuff going on versus the traditional stuff going on. So I want to make sure her and, and Jean are well informed on what all this means. So those that are asking them, you know, they can be able to explain what, what all this means and how it's not forgetting the, the historical part of Maynor.
Yes, sir. I will do that. And Councilwoman Weir, I will be sending Sarah from Civ Start your information and she's the one that sends out the bi-weekly meeting notices for us.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
All right, moving on to Peace Challenge. That is me. All right, so we did a resolution to become Members of Cities United. It's a lot of large, big cities that are a part of this in focusing towards youth, eighteen and under youth and, and, and young adults in mitigating as we've been seeing very, very prevalently on social media and other areas, this, the school, the prison pipeline concern, restorative practices, the, 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 the way certain laws are written that may be at a disadvantage to, to our youth and so forth. So Cities United was something that I, I brought to you all, felt that as we continue this mindset of being proactive, we may not need it now, but how do we put the systems and programs and do the research and everything in place before it becomes an issue that we see in the larger cities, right? So I submitted, I, I pushed over the chief. He gets some input from Lydia and Debbie and others, and we submitted for the Peace Challenge. And we were accepted out of six cities to be in the Peace Challenge. We are the only small city to be a part of this Peace Challenge. And, and primarily because of the advocacy of being proactive and leaning forward in helping out before it becomes an issue, right? And so this Peace Challenge is a twelve-month project focused on increasing the number of cities implementing a coordinated crisis response. It primarily focuses at homicides or shootings to, to mitigate and reduce that. But we can also look in other areas that we want to, to focus on. And this, this, this twelve-month is a quarterly peer-to-peer learning session that's led by leading experts and partner cities that are also currently implementing various types of programs. And then get down here, it talks about a part of this, again, what I, what I love about all these opportunities is we're eligible for a mini grant of up to five thousand dollars in training along with technical assistance for up to fifty hours. So at no cost to the city. But, you know, our finance director, Lydia, always says there is a cost to, to no-cost things. So we'll learn what the cost is to this no-cost. But the selection for the mini grant and training and technical expertise, it has four areas we could focus in on. Vision for homicide and/or shooting response system, communication and marketing, enhancing communication and marketing capabilities, focusing on current violence, violence interruption and street outreach strategies as well as collaboration and partnership efforts. And I think this directly aligns in with two things that we already kind of created last year, which was the Public Safety Committee and then even now the Education Committee, right? So I think this pilot for a whole year for twenty twenty-one can help also tie into some of the other efforts and discussions that we want to have with both the school district, Compass Rose, and then even in the Public Safety Committee, the, the various concerns within the community with all the different law enforcement entities that, that, that come in and go out of the city. So any questions, concerns, or, or remarks regarding the Peace Challenge in this opportunity for, for the city of Maynor?
Yes. Who, is this going to be handed over for the training and all that? Is that going to be handed over to Chief to, to take the training or in, as, is this something that, is this, is this challenge going to default over to PD?
So there's supposed to be an on-briefing regarding this program and the identification of who leads and so forth will be. The only thing they sent out so far early this month was the announcement of who was selected and that more, more to follow.
Because the only, the only concern with that is, once you start talking about someone submitting for a grant, that has to be city staff. It cannot be a non-city staff person.
Got it. No, understood. And I know you all will make sure we're peace clean on all of that. So definitely, I know for Cities United, the liaison that we identified was, I believe, was you, Mayor Potem. Harvey, correct, for Cities United? Okay. So yeah, Chief, Chief would be working with, with Mayor Potem hard on this and, and so, but yeah, just wanted to provide information, opportunity, and like anything else. For whatever reason, we, we may not go for a grant. We, we, we may not, but at least we have the opportunity. And we'll, we'll see what we can be able to make happen. Any additional questions on this one? There being none, moving on to public hearings. Now, call the, to conduct a public hearing regarding a concept plan for the Maynor OZ subdivision being ten point eight eight acres or less and being located near the intersection of US Highway two ninety east and Greg Maynor Road, Maynor, Texas. Scott?
All right, Mayor Council, this is just a one-lot subdivision for where proposed apartments are to be located. It's already zoned multifamily. It's right behind Route of Ford. And so this is a public hearing. We haven't received any public comments regarding it. But if you have any questions, I can answer them for you.
No questions on my end. Open up to, to council. Any questions, remarks? There being none. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
There are a motion that we close the public hearing for the concept plan for the Maynor OZ subdivision.
All right, has been properly motioned. Do I have a second?
A second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Wallace. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa? Jean?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to item number two. I now announce the, the conducting of a public hearing regarding a concept plan for the Maynor Downs multifamily subdivision and being twenty-four point eight one acres or less and being located at ninety-nine ten Hill Lane, Maynor, Texas. Scott?
This is also another one-lot subdivision. If you're familiar with Hill Lane, you know, you have the, the high school at the corner there with Greg Maynor and then the, the property where the St. Joseph's churches plan to locate. And then there's one more property after that before you get to Maynor Downs. And so Maynor Downs, that's not in the city limits, but this last property, this ninety-nine ten Hill Lane. This is the last property in our city limits on Hill Lane. But again, it's already zoned for multifamily. And so they're just plating the property right now. And if you do have questions, the engineer is online. But again, it's just a, a one-lot subdivision, so.
So I'm trying to envision how big would that, how, how big, oh, I mean, how big are we really talking about? What, what, what's it gonna be able to hold multifamily that size?
So it, the zoning that it has is MF1, which is fifteen units an acre, which I think gets out to like three hundred and eighty-five, but it's unlikely they would reach that maximum just because of, you know, the parking, the open space they're required, their attention. I think they have a preliminary site plan that's actually closer to like two sixty.
Okay.
Somewhere in there, I believe. But they haven't actually filed the site plan yet. But again, they're, they have MF1, so fifteen units an acre. So that would be their maximum.
Got it. That's what I needed. Thank you, Scott.
Any additional questions? Got something, Jean? No? All right, there being none. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor, I'd like to close the public hearing on the concept plan for the Maynor Downs multifamily subdivision.
All right, has been properly motioned. Do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded. Questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Wallace? Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes, moving on to the consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council. And will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless requested by myself. Or a council member, in which event, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Uh, and so on the consent agenda, we have item number three. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the city council minutes. Item number four, consideration, discussion, possible action on the acceptance of the December. Twenty twenty departmental reports. Item number five, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the purchase contract. Determine commercial investments LP for a special warranty deed. Slope easement and temporary construction easement. And I want to add item six and seven, because we just did the public hearings on them. So item six, consideration, discussion, possible action. On a concept plan for the Maynor OZ subdivision being ten point eight eight acres more or less. And being located near the intersection of US Highway two ninety east in Greg Maynor Road, Maynor, Texas. And item number seven, consideration, discussion, and possible action. On a concept plan for the Maynor Downs multifamily subdivision. And being twenty-four point eight one acres more or less and being located at ninety-nine ten Hill Lane. Maynor, Texas. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Mayor, this is uh Krupa. I did have a question. On six and seven, and I'll wait until the motion is uh. Uh, made.
All right, so you want to go back to those to be in separate items?
No, sir, I just need to ask Scott just two questions, that's all. So if a motion is made and discussion is created, then I can do that.
You want to create the motion?
I would like to interject, sorry. I had questions on six and seven as well, so I would like for those two to be pulled out.
Got it, no problem.
Thank you.
Motion for, for items three, four, and five.
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda for agenda items three, four, and five as posted.
All right, probably motion, do I have a second?
A second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion? Uh, I have one question, Public Works, page fifty-nine. Uh, the Park's bathroom under bidding phase. Um, I know we talked, talked quite a bit about uh bathrooms out there, so. Uh, I saw what was on there, but I didn't, I haven't been updated on, on the status of that or what, what's going on with Park Bathroom, so. Able to give a quick synopsis?
Uh, at the moment, we did go out for bids and the bid didn't come in the way what we were expecting. So we expect to go out bids, I guess, sometime this month. And Frank, he, he may be able to add a little bit more to that.
Are we looking at just one, one major location, or are we looking at multiple different bathroom locations or?
Just one.
Yes, it's the one location at Timmerman Park.
Okay, got it. All right. Any additional questions? There being, uh, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes, moving on now to the regular agenda. Item number six, consideration, discussion, and possible action. On a concept plan for the Maynor OZ subdivision being eight, ten point eighty-eight acres. More or less and being located near the intersection of US Highway two ninety east. In Greg Maynor Road, Maynor, Texas. Scott?
Um, yeah, as I mentioned before, it's just the one-lot subdivision. For uh potential future apartments behind Route of Ford, you know, which all. If you have any other questions, Councilmember Krupa or when y'all motion it.
Yes, uh, Scott, this is Jean. I wanted, I, I, I noticed between the two items, okay? The number of units approved on a ten point eight eight acre. Plot on number six, there's approved up to two hundred and forty-six. Apartment slash units for multifamily. Mayor, can I go to number seven and bring in number seven on this one?
Uh, is.
I, I, I think I may already gone, so the number six, the one uh that's in front of us for right now. It's owned MF two, which is twenty-five units an acre. So it has a higher density zoning, because it's um, the future Greg Maynor is a. A higher category road than, you know, Hill Lane is right now, so. It, it's, it's zoning allows for more apartments, so if you're wondering why there's. You know, almost similar amount of apartments on half an acreage, it's, it's that's why.
Okay, thank you. You answered both my questions. Thank you, Scott.
All right, uh, I'll, I'll leave it, I'll leave item number six open for discussion to the floor. Any additional questions?
Those are actually the same, exact questions that I had because of the, the ratio and the percentage didn't seem to add up, so I didn't know. But I did catch that one was zone MF two and then one was zone MF one. And when we, I guess, when it was approved in the past for multifamily, it was approved for that amount. So even though it's a larger, maybe if it was on a different property, if it was a larger number of acres. But if it was zoned at a, at a different MF, like a smaller one, then does that mean? Less units? Or, because like, I guess twenty-five units, that, that's what they can have the max to, because you said potential, Scott. Multifamily apartments, but it could be something different with the concept? Or when, once they get into their planning of what they really want to put there?
They have a site plan for this one, they have a site plan filed, and it's, you know, traditional. Three-story, I believe, just apartments. Um, similar to Maynor Grand, that's near Baylor Scott and Wey, and the Grassdill or by HD Fitness, it's that kind of thing.
Okay, I guess it was just the big difference I may have seen later on. Where there's more area, so this, this is definitely going to be a high, what did you call it? A high-density area for other, for many reasons, right?
Yes, yeah.
But since this one has a site plan, then that's definitely going to be that number of units going in.
Yes, I can verify the site plan, they did purchase one acre. From a adjacent property owner, which got them to the ten point eight eight. So they might be at two sixty, maybe, but it's somewhere in there, it's, it's very similar.
Okay, all right, thank you, that was my question.
Thank you, Scott.
Any additional questions? There being none, do I have a motion on the floor for, is it item number six?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve. The concept plan for Maynor OZ subdivision being on ten acres. Ten point eight acres more or less and being located near the intersection of Hu, US Highway two ninety east. And Greg Maynor Road in Maynor, Texas.
Is this a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
And probably seconded, any additional questions to the motion, questions to the motion, there being none, roll call please?
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember um Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes, moving on to agenda item number seven, consideration, discussion, possible action. On a concept plan for the Maynor Downs multifamily subdivision. In being twenty-four point eighty-one acres more or less and being located at ninety-nine ten Hill Lane. Texas. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, a motion that we accept the concept plan for the Maynor Downs multifamily subdivision. Being on two po, uh, two, twenty-four point eight one acres more or less. And being located at ninety-nine, one zero, Hill Lane, Maynor, Texas.
Has been so motion, do I have a second?
A second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion? Questions? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, uh, motion passes, moving on to agenda item number eight. Consideration, discussion, and possible action on a rate and fee adjustment letter. Agreement with Waste Connections Loan Star Inc., Lydia?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Counsel. Um, so the document you have before you um is. Waste Connections is requesting a three point eight percent increase on their rates per our contract. They are entitled up to five percent, um, but uh we went ahead and. Their request is at three point eight percent. And so we're can, our recommendation is to approve, but to staircase, to tier it. Um, the increase onto the citizens that would not take effect until March first. And then the next, uh, the next increase would occur. Uh, the next, the next, the next increase would not occur until July. So we divide that three point eight percent in half.
How much of a, how much in, in, in um cost is that increase to, to?
The total is fifty-nine cents.
Fifty-nine, okay, so total fifty-nine, okay, got it.
Yes.
Yeah, the reason I said is because we know that, that rate percentages are so misleading. So fifty-nine cents is, is really the increase to the uh, to the resident. So basically, what's that, twenty-five, twenty, twenty-seven cents in one phase and about twenty-seven cents in the next phase? Okay, uh, do I have a motion on the floor? Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I make a motion that we accept and approve the rate and fee adjustment letter. Agreement with Waste Connections Loan Star Incorporated.
Yes, there are probably motion, do I have a second? And seconded by Councilwoman Wallace, any questions?
Yes, I'm sorry, the motion has to include, um, they directed him to execute the letter as well.
Okay, uh.
I will modify my motion that the city manager execute the letter.
For the mayor, I'm sorry.
Okay, the mayor, let me start over. Mayor, I. Make a motion to approve the rate and fee adjustment letter agreement with Waste Connection Loan Star Incorporated. And that we approve that you approve the letter. If, uh, for the fee, the rate and fee adjustment with the Waste Connection Loan Star.
Uh, Olivia, I mean, uh, you're here?
Yes, it's fine.
All right, cool, uh, and Councilwoman Wallace, you still seconding?
Yes, sir.
All right, any questions to the motion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So uh, just to be clear, it's fifty-nine cents starting March first?
No, 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 uh, it's fifty-nine cents total.
Oh, total for the entire time?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
You're gonna do it, you're gonna do it as tier, so it's gonna be like twenty-seven cents on March. And then another, the balance twenty-seven on July, right? Correct, twenty-nine cents, uh, thirty cents, um, at the end, twenty-nine cents this time, and then thirty cents. In three months' time.
Maximum fifty-nine.
Correct.
Yeah, don't, don't use my math, and my, my math is horrible.
So um, I, so it's an extra seven dollars and twenty cents a, a year. Um, do we know why we're moving, what's the, why we are moving up? I know we have an allowance of five percent, but you know, what's going to change or, or what was the change that's causing the request for the increase?
It was a cost of living increase for Waste Connections.
And so, um, so, so this, are they? What happens, so we, do we have to increase the rate, or is this what they're asking us for?
Yes, we have to, it's in our contract.
Okay.
They could have asked for an increase last year and they chose not to.
Okay. So it's for, for their cost of doing business, their, their cost of business is, is increased. And so they want to move closer to that five percent, but they don't want to go all the way to five percent, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so, and that fifty-nine cents is going to be phased in, it's a total of about seven dollars and twenty cents a year extra.
Once it's, once it's phased in one hundred percent, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any additional questions? There being none, uh, roll call please?
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill? Emily?
You keep muting, Emily.
Yes.
Okay.
That's my computer, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes, and moving on to agenda item number nine, consideration, discussion, possible action. On ordinance amending Maynor Code of Ordinances, Chapter fifteen. Site development by providing for the amendment of off-street parking requirements. Landscaping and screening definitions, fence and wall standards, sign definitions. Prohibited signs, illuminated signs, and outdoor lighting requirements. Scott?
Um, so I had sent out the latest version earlier this evening to y'all. Our, our attorney, they just reviewed it for form, and so that's the, I sent you a redline version with their form edits. So the, the content stayed all the same, they just, you know, fixed a number here and there, or moved a sentence here and there, but it's all generally the same. Um, but I can run through the changes I made, it starts on page one twenty-two of your, your packets, if you wanted to check. The first one being related to the, the parking. Um, this was a provision that we actually just put into the zoning ordinance earlier this month. Um, so we're just removing it here, because it makes more sense, makes most sense in the parking ordinance. But uh, in the meantime, it's better to be in the zoning ordinance, this section in the site development ordinance was really just a placeholder. This section relates to, you know, parking lot design, and your aisle widths, your, how wide your parking spaces need to be, that kind of stuff. So it's, it's not where vehicles, how vehicles are parked should be regulated, so it was removed, that's all, it's in the zoning ordinance now. Um, the next part was, uh, we just updated the definition for a privacy fence, so it matches what's in the zoning ordinance. So there's just concurrence there. The next one, this uh fencing materials. Fencing materials table, um, back when the zoning ordinance, the site development ordinance was done. Some references in the table got, uh, misnumbered, I guess, misledered. So instead of being A, B, C, D, it got changed to one, two, three, four, which didn't make sense to the reference that it pointed to. So this just corrects that, just, you know, one becomes A, two becomes B. That's all that does. And then we added. Um, sections eight through eighteen into the fencing. And so that all relates to just, uh, fence construction standards. Uh, for safety and aesthetic purposes. It doesn't get into, like, the materials that was that table that was already established. Um, heights, it doesn't change anything about heights or locations or anything like that. It's more of just, um, you know, masonry. If you have a masonry wall, you have to have engineered if it's higher than four feet, just safety wise, because it's a big, heavy masonry wall. Um, you know, fence footings have to be twenty-four inches into the ground and that'll help. Because our soils are so expansive over time, them shifting and falling, so. That's what our building officials recommended is a defense post be twenty-four inches into the ground. And so. It's just safety and aesthetics. Um, uh, number eight too also says if you have, the fences should be flat topped. Another safety feature. So if someone were to do a wrought iron fence, you know, that's. You know, if your front yard fence is four feet and you put decorative spikes on it or decorative points, you know, it's a safety hazard. And so this just says fences should be flat topped, uh, or shall be flat topped for safety purposes. And so that's all that section. And then, um. Getting into the next section for fifteen point oh four point zero zero six. Uh, we just added definitions to the sign code because we added some new sections in there, so. Light trespass, cabinet sign, obscene sign. Uh, amended the definition for portable sign to exclude sandwich boards and then added a definition for sandwich boards. Um, so that's that. And then on page one twenty-five of this.
I'm sorry, were you, sorry, saying they won't be allowing the sandwich?
No, um, okay, good question. Um, so. It still says portable signs are prohibited excluding sandwich boards.
Okay.
So, um, I'd heard all concerns previously, so this kind of goes into the code to allow those. In some fashion. Um, so yes, on page one twenty-five of your packets, this section is fifteen point oh four point sixteen B. That's the list of prohibited signs. So again, you know, portable signs excluding sandwich boards. Need changeable electronic signs. There's a section on that I can get into later, but. Those were prohibited. They still are unless authorized by this new section, which is. Going to be through development agreements authorized by the city manager, uh, which again, I'll get into that when we get to that section. Um, prohibiting obscene signs, which is a little tricky, but it's good to have in there. Basically. We, that's why I put the definition obscene. It's, has to be pretty egregious, but, um, it's there. And then just basically some. You know, stacked products along roadways can't be signs or advertising, so. Um, and then. The next ones, this fifteen, this, you know, zero point eighteen, one, two, and three, uh, all of those were. For, you know, pole signs, monument signs, and attached wall signs. Um, providing how they are illuminated. And we did a new section on sign illumination. So those, those codes were changed and it was just. Uh, put in there that illuminated signs shall comply with the new section and fifteen point oh five, which is our outdoor lighting code. Um, so just kind of cleaned it up a little bit. And again, there's, uh, digital signs refer to that new section. Um, and there's a typo that I corrected. And then there was a section related to when commercial property is for sale. They're allowed an additional sign, um, which the intent of that sign is for a real estate sign, just say for sale or for lease, but. We really can't regulate what signs say unless it gets to that obscene category, but. Um, so this little section just says, hey, if a property is for sale, if you have a building for lease, a tenant space for lease. You can have this type of sign. That should have been in the code earlier. It was missed unfortunately, but it's being added now. Um, and then we get to the section on sandwich boards. And so this just says, you know, they have to be on commercial property, um, it could be twelve square feet. Um, they're not supposed to be anchored. Um, they're always supposed to be out during business hours. Um, they shouldn't be a cabinet sign, so there's sort of just regulations on how they're going to be. You can't tape additional signs to them. And then for the placement. Uh, basically, you know, safety wise, you can't block ADA ramps, you can't block sidewalks, can't block your doors or your windows if. You know, for fire escape purposes. Um, but the one I want to point out especially is, um, subsection E of that for sandwich boards, which says. If they're in the city's right of way, so, uh, if they're on the public sidewalk. Um, they're supposed to have a license agreement with the city, which license agreements don't cost anything. We don't charge people for those. Um, we've done that very frequently. You'll see them. We did, um, you know, cameras on. Uh, in the right of way for Green Bear, I think it was, um. There's a bridge in the Bell Farms Park. Uh, we do them regularly often, the fountain in the Bell Farms subdivision. Uh, it's basically whenever a person is putting their private property under the city's property. It, you know, protects the city's liability. If someone were to trip on it, um, even if it was placed correctly, it's, it's sort of just. Keeping the ownership and maintenance of that. That sign or whatever it is with the person and not on the city. And so. Um, and I know there are instances here in town where, you know, buildings are built right up to their front property line. And so the sidewalks in front of their buildings is the city's right of way. And so if they wanted to put out a sandwich board, which they could. They just have this one other step of doing a license agreement, which would be authorized by the city manager. So it wouldn't come back through y'all. It would just be a standard form that we do. That, you know, we would, if someone came in and they said they wanted a sandwich board, which they don't need a permit for. Sorry, I should have said in the beginning, this section is for signs that don't require permits. Um, so they don't have a cost to do them at all. They just have to do this license agreement. Um, and then I'll say window signs that are less than thirty percent of a window, that's already in the code, but. Putting it in this section for not permitting because policy wise, we haven't required permits on window signs, less than thirty percent of the window. And then the next two sections again are related to the digital signs referencing the new section for how those are handled. Um, and then on page one twenty-nine is all those standards for digital signs. So as it is right now, um, electronic signs, even like gas station fuel pricers, all of that are prohibited. And the intent was back when we did this, that. Um, apart, we could just offer development agreement to a person and. There are, you know, anyone that wanted to come in or do, have a digital sign. And if their outdoor lighting was either made into compliance or they built their siding compliance with their outdoor lighting standards. That's what the development agreement would be, but our legal said. That only the Board of Adjustments can issue variances unless it's specifically spelled out that. A development agreement is possible. And so that's what this does. It says, you know, they have to, you know, maybe authorized by entering into a development agreement executed by the city manager. And references in the outdoor lighting compliance. And then it goes on to provide, uh, standards. For those electronic signs, so they can't be more than fifty percent of the pole or monument sign or attached wall sign. Or if it's on an auto oriented canopy, it's twelve square feet, my apologies. Um, so it just gives base development standards for those types of signs. And that's kind of that. And then we added a section on changeable letter signs because that didn't exist before. They weren't prohibited at all. But, um, this just gives standards for aesthetic reasons, like. You know, your letters have to be the same, uh, can't be more than fifty percent of your sign. Just so there's aesthetic purposes, you know, keeps the signs looking clean. Um, and then on page one thirty-one for construction standards, we just added a couple more again for safety and aesthetic purposes. Our, our construction standards was pretty minimal, so we just added a couple more in there. And then for illuminated signs, the section we removed was mostly concerned with, um. Like the building permit and like the electrical code, which is all in chapter three of our code. That's our building. Uh, like building code chapter. Um, so what the new code says, it still references the same thing, that first one, a compliance of the electrical code is still there. But it gets into for illuminated signs, you know, where they can be located. Shielding the light source, lights, light trespass, uh, if, how they're internally illuminated, timing, brightness. So it actually gets into. Um, the manner in which a sign is illuminated, whereas the old code didn't. And then that last section, um, is in the outdoor lighting chapter. And that just added, uh, reference to light trespass, uh, from a property onto a non-residential property. Or residential property provides a maximum amount, um, which was taken from the International Sign Association, you know, they. They, they studied and most cities, you know, all the cities I looked at, they have these same, um, foot candle measurements of. Zero point zero three foot candles over ambient lighting conditions. That was, like, all the cities had that. Um, and then many of the cities reduced that to zero point zero one foot candles for residential property, like trespass. And so I've added that here. And that's that.
Sounds good. Appreciate the thorough in-depth analysis as you always give. Um, I know that's definitely good for the residents who are calling and I'm just giving to the packets. So, uh, with that being said, do I have a motion on the floor?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance six zero one with the mother of fixations presented.
There has been probably motion, do I have a second?
My second.
I give that one to Councilwoman Weir. Uh, any questions to the motion? Questions?
Mayor, I just have one question for Scott. Um, you gave us something on Mr. Sam Maripas. Uh, and situa, on your situation with best drop, uh, address.
Mm-hmm.
Does this affect him at all?
No, you know, and that's why I, I had mentioned this doesn't change heights or locations or anything like that. Nothing related to.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to make sure of.
Yep.
That's why I'm making the motion.
All right, any additional questions? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Weir.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace.
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
All right, motion passes. I now call this meeting adjourned at eight twenty-three PM. You all have a great evening and I'm sure I'll be talking to you all.
Thank you. Same to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Goodbye, everybody. Goodbye.
Bye.